I'll call this regular workshop meeting the Jacksonville City Council or Council. We have an agenda, proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, and we're going to give motion to approve that agenda with taking number five of the discussion out. We're moving.
No move is amended.
Any discussion here not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have minutes from October 22, 2024, regular meeting, and three consent items. Need a motion to approve.
Move on to action on the minutes and the consent items.
Second.
Discussion here not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So we'll start off with our auditor's report for the city's annual comprehensive financial report for FY 2024.
Mayor, we're going to bring LeAnn Bagasala up and let her go through this, and if you have any questions, we're going to leave her sitting right here for all those questions until you're done. So she said she has at least three hours if you need it.
It's a lot of words. You've got to cover it.
So I do have the financial statements. If you have questions, I think you'll have it electronically. So we'll get started. So what I wanted to cover tonight is I wanted to go through who our engagement team is for the audit, and this is your audit of your fiscal year 2024, so it's July 1, 2023 through 6/30/2024. And we're going to go through who your engagement team is, so you get familiar with who worked on your audit. We're going to go through all of your audit opinions. We're also going to have a discussion on net position or fund balance, and we're also going to go through any audit findings that we had, any recommendations. We do have some required communication that we do have to discuss. It's a couple slides. And then just giving you an update of what's going on in the accounting world, so you can understand what your staff is having to go through. And if anytime you have questions, please let me know. So this slide right here just depicts who Modest and Jenkins are. We are a firm that's been in existence for over 100 years. This is our third year on your audit. You can see by just looking at this slide that our government practice is very large. It makes up a third of our revenue every year. We have over 725 government clients, and we operate in six states and 14 offices, and one of those offices is in Raleigh, North Carolina. So I serve as your engagement director. That means I ultimately sign your audit opinions. And then Tim serves as your quality review partner. He is what you call his second partner. He is not involved in the audit at all during the audit, but he makes sure that what I do and the opinion that we're signing, it is correct, and that I make sure that I cross my Ts and dotted my Is in all of our testing that we did. And then Jack Woods serves as your engagement senior. He's basically the liaison of us, just making sure everything's getting done. And you also have several other staff members that work on your audit, but the three of us make up your core team, and we've been on the team for three years. So this next slide is your audit opinion. So at the front of your financial statements, you have an audit opinion before your actual statements that basically says that what our responsibility is as your auditor. So we consider the internal control structure of the city for the purposes of reviewing the basic financial statements, but not for the purpose of providing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. We do our audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles as well as governmental auditing standards. Our opinion provides reasonable, but not absolute assurance that the basic financial statements are free and material with statement, but ultimately the financial statements are the responsibility of your management. For your basic report on financial statements, you receive an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we can provide, that your financial statements conform with generally accepted accounting principles. But our responsibility does not extend beyond the financial information in the report. We also audit the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority, which is a component unit of the city. We issued our opinion on September 27 of this year related to their fiscal year 2024, and that was also an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. This next slide depicts just a little bit of financial information. There is a lot more information within your financial statements and the management discussion analysis that explains the changes that happened throughout the year. If you look at this information, this is only discussing your net position of the total government, that is what you call your governmental activities and your business-type activities. You will see that in the current year, there was an increase of net position for the city of $43 million. The biggest increase in that was your net investment in capital assets of 32. That is a calculation of your net position, which essentially calculates your assets that you have and subtracts your debt. And so the big increase for your net investment in capital asset for the current year was there was a 19, over $19 million increase in net assets this year. And then as you pay off debt, you know, you take assets minus debt, and that kind of contributes to your increase. Some of that also increased this year because in the prior year, you were holding on to unspent bond proceeds. The other numbers in your calculation, the restrictions, there is a restricted state statute that is a calculation that is given to us by the state that we calculate every year, and that will fluctuate every year. And then you have a couple other restrictions in public works, public safety and economic development. And you will see that there is a lineup here for an error correction. We did restate the prior year financial statements by 3.2 million, and we'll discuss that in another slide. As far as your compliance reports, so in the back of your financial statements, you have three extra opinions. The first one is what we call a yellow book report, and that is over government auditing standards. We gave you a clean opinion in terms of your yellow book opinion. However, we did note a material weakness for restatement of prior year balances, and that is disclosed in your financial statement. The prior period adjustment is disclosed on, the finding is disclosed on page 284. Essentially, there was two prior period adjustments, one of them related to the amortization of bond premiums. So when you amortize bond premiums, you're technically supposed to use a method called the effective interest method. However, the city has been using what's called the straight line method, and that's fine. That's an acceptable practice to use straight line. However, if the effective interest method differs from the straight line method by too much, then you need to restate and start using the effective interest method. So we did go ahead and decide to restate in the current year because of the difference between the two methods, and the city will going forward be using the effective interest method, just go ahead and switching to the more acceptable one so that there aren't material differences from one to the other. The other restatement related to recording of FEMA grant revenue, and that resulted in an adjustment of $1.2 million to the emergency relief fund, and then about $99,000 to capital project fund. And that restatement just said timing of the recognition of revenue is recognized in the prior year, and it should not have been. So those are your two restatements that resulted in one material weakness. We also issued two compliance reports. One of those has to do with your federal programs, and one of them have to do with your state programs. These are your grant programs. So in the current year, we had to review four major programs. We reviewed two federal programs. One is your ARCA program, where you spend a great deal of money, as well as the highway planning grant. And then from a state perspective, we reviewed your grant funding for SCIF, as well as you had appropriation for a fire truck. So we reviewed those two state programs. In terms of your opinion that we issued over the city's compliance with the uniform guidance for federal programs, we issue an unmodified opinion. There was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted in your compliance with those two programs. And then we also issued a state opinion in accordance with the State of North Carolina Single Audit Implementation Act, and we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion. We got no issues that resulted in a significant deficiency or material weakness. The very clean opinions for your grant funding. So the next thing we have is a couple required communications, but before we go through those, the local government commission of the state of North Carolina requires us as part of our issuing the audit opinions, we have to submit the financial statements to them, as well as what's called a data input worksheet that basically just accumulates information from the audit that we send to them. In this data input form, they have, the LGC has come up with various things that they call financial performance indicators or concern. These are things that the city council needs to be aware of, and you actually have to respond. If the city has any financial indicators or scare, you have to respond with a comment of how you're going to fix those going forward. So the city had two financial indicators of concern. The first one was you had a material weakness. So they want to know, the local government commission wants to know how you're going to address that going forward so that you don't have the issue, you know, going into the next years. And, you know, the response to that is we're fixing how we amortize debt. We understand how to, you know, properly book FEMA revenue so those won't reoccur in the future. The other item that is a financial indicator or concern, you had this one last year too, is related to the water and sewer capital asset ratio. And basically, your ratio that you have this year, if you add up the numbers and how they calculate it, is .23. The local commission encourages that calculation to be .5. And so when you received this financial indicator of concern last year, the city went and created a new capital asset policy. Basically, what it's saying is this calculation is saying that you have assets in your water and sewer fund that look like they're almost fully depreciated. And the concern here is that maybe the city needs to implement a new capital policy related to the useful lives of these assets, or it's kind of a red flag to say, hey, y'all might need to consider whether you need to buy in the future. These things are going to go out of use. That's not the case for the city. The issue with the city is that the useful lives of those capital assets needed to be fixed. So the city adopted a new capital asset policy that changed the useful lives of some of their assets, basically saying that the useful life of a lot of this water and sewer is really a really long time. And so that was fixed, but that's not going to change this ratio like in a single year. It's going to take multiple years to fix that. So you're going to respond to the local government commission and essentially say that we've taken corrective action steps to fix this ratio, however, it's going to take multiple years because the calculation considers old assets that are already fully depreciated. Those don't come off your books. They stay on your books. So it's going to take a while to get that ratio up. So you will continue to hear this for several years until they change the percentage. Okay. So as part of the required communication, we wanted you to know that your financial statements include significant accounting policies of the city. Management's ultimately responsible for picking the accounting policies, and those are disclosed in one of your financial statements. During the current year, the city did implement GASB statement 100 related to accounting changes and error corrections. So since you had a prior period adjustment, that's technically called a error correction. So we did implement that standard in the current year, but ultimately, the policies that the city has, we have no issues with them. They are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and we don't know of the city being involved in any controversial or emerging issues. Also, in your financial statements, there are several estimates and judgments that management derives that are included in your financial statements, and some of the estimates are actually actuarially determined. We reviewed those estimates as part of our audit, and we took no issue with the estimates that are being used. From our relationship standpoint, we received full cooperation from city's management. I know everybody in finance was working very, very long hours to get this audit issued timely, and we did issue it before the local government commission deadline. We have not heard back from the local government commission if they accept your audit. It takes a little while, but I've seen an issue with them accepting your audit. There was also no disagreements with management during the audit. As part of the audit, we do make management sign a management representation letter that basically says the information given to us was accurate and complete. That's something that we're required to get as part of our audit, and we got that. The next thing is we are not aware of management consulting with other accountants on anything, any discussions that was held with management. If we had any discussions with management on significant items, those were things that we had internally between Modest and Jenkins and city finance. From an audit adjustment standpoint, the books and records that we got as part of the audit, they were very clean. We did have some journal entries in the audit that we did post. There are three entries, though, that we decided not to post, and that's a decision that is made from Modest and Jenkins. Basically, we decided there are three adjustments that individually and in the aggregate together were immaterial to the users of the financial statement, so we did not post them. But we do have to disclose that there was three. These threes were included in the management rep letter that management signed. They're aware that there were three past audit adjustments. From a financial disclosures perspective, we wanted you to know that as part of our audit, we do review the financial disclosures to make sure that they are neutral, consistent, and provide clarity for the audit. The next one, next large paragraph basically says, do not share our audit without sharing the whole thing, the financial statements without sharing our opinions with it. And then the last item that we have to communicate is that Modest and Jenkins is independent of the city and the TDA in their respective financial reporting process. This slide right here just tells you that we do have a government advisory service that does do different things that can help government clients. Some of this we can do without impairing our independence, and some of it we cannot do, but there are things that are available. And if anytime the city needs help with something, either that's something we may be able to help them, or we could tell them, you know, another firm that can help implement some things. These are huge paragraphs that I am not going to read to you, but I provided the information because I think it's important. There are a lot of GASB pronouncements coming up in the future. GASB statement 101 related to compensated absences is coming, applicable for your fiscal year 2025. This is a big standard that's going to require a lot of work from finance to get historical information about basically accrued compensation, like your paid time off and holiday, all that kind of stuff. That calculation is changing this year, and so we'll have to work with management to get the correct numbers, the liability book this year. There are two other statements that are coming up on this slide. One is about certain risk disclosures that will need to be added to the financial statements. The third one is a financial reporting model that we have several years before. It's coming, it's coming fiscal year 2026. It will change the way that the, mainly it changes the way that the MDNA is written to provide more clarity, but it also changes the statements a little bit. So when that standard comes up, we'll help management make sure that the financial statements are properly represented under that new statement. There also have two slides worth of GASB project. GASB is very, very busy on more standards. The first two standards, well, actually, the first three standards you see on the slide was just to find out more information by the end of the year, but it is November, so they're a little behind on these standards. But these are things that we'll work with management to help them address when the standard is actually out and applicable. There's a couple other ones. There's a subsequent event standard coming out, and then also a revenue recognition standard that is coming out. And I wish I could say that I'm retiring before the standards are coming, but I'm not, so we'll be around for those. And then this last slide tells you that as part of being in contract with us as Modest and Jenkins, we do provide your finance department free quarterly continuing education if they needed to maintain their CPA license. We've been doing this for about 15 years. It's about eight hours every single quarter, so it's actually a lot of CPE that your folks can get for free. That's it. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. I'm always amazed at y'all digging through all this and producing that thick document. So thank you.
Well, your finance team writes this gigantic document here. Yeah.
And just put the letter in there with the.
We just stick the letters in there, but we do. But this is my version, and you can see all the marks on it. Like I'm just like when I, yes, we do.
She's just the mean school teacher.
I'm just the one that, you know, works it up.
Forgot to carry the number and add its track. Put them in the right column.
Period here and a comma here.
Mayor, I'll add, as we continue to grow with our revenue sources, it does create challenges with staff, and that's part of the audit process is to review how we're handling a lot of the accountability on these grants. So when we talk about having 57 or 61 active grants and the management process that goes with that, it does in turn create some additional checks and balances that have to happen throughout this process. So as we look at our staffing levels and the management process that we have in the departments, you know, we like to bring that back into the finance world so that it's overseen through finance and not individually by the department. So hopefully, when you read through the audit, you can see some of those checks because that's a big part of what we do and how we make sure that we're successful day in and day out. I'll tell you, for that instance, that's a Carlotta and a Carroll that are reviewing all of those grants to make sure that we're in compliance and trying to stay safe and sound so we can get more.
But I have to say, they do an outstanding job this year.
It's impressive, Mayor. Really is.
I've been doing it for a long.
For a couple years.
Oh, yeah. Terms of carryover items for the audit, that $16 million grant that we received last month, whatever month.
Noah grant.
What issues does that pose in terms of the length of time to do all that activity and audit?
The good news on that one from the staff side, and then Ms. Bagasala can comment on the other side, but on the staff side, when we put that into a project, just like the sewer transmission line, we put them into a project, we carry that project for the life of it. And so that Noah grant, since it has multiple projects within the overall grant period, which is the two different years of funding, those are going to be longer projects. So to manage those and to stay on top of it, that's not just the grant management side, but it's going to be, it's going to be Pat's team and others trying to manage that long term, so on the audit side.
Yeah, so it's awesome how much grant funding that you have, especially these general appropriations that keep coming in. From an audit perspective, anytime you hit a certain threshold, right now, the threshold is $750,000 in expenditures for a grant, it automatically requires to be audited every three years. So like, for example, the fire truck that you bought in fiscal year 2024, it was just one invoice, but it required us to audit it because it was over that threshold. So, you know, when you have these big projects, you kind of have to realize that not only does it create staff time, but then it's potentially going to get audited too. So that will create, you know, more work, and, you know, at some point, it does cost a little bit more.
Or the threshold.
The threshold right now is $750,000. It will be changed into $1 million soon, and then the state of North Carolina is trying to raise their threshold right now. State grants threshold is $500,000, and we're trying to get that increase to $1 million.
Is that cost of projects and everything?
If you think about a threshold of $750,000, if we list out our projects, every project, I mean theoretically, is over that number. If we get a $1 million project, we're like, hey, we got some good bids. I mean, it's a big deal to see that. So then when that triggers it, then that manpower to manage those grants and then to have that audit, that's a big deal, just in terms of that maintenance.
Oh, the asset turnover as far as depreciation, what is, what is the restriction on that, the limit on that as far as, do we have schedules for?
Different, different assets.
Old stock, I mean, as far as.
Life, estimated life for the different assets.
Okay.
The problem is our old schedules, you know, underestimated the life of it.
So we just put in that new 800 system, well, the CAD system.
Right. Yes, sir.
We've done a lot of that. How do we, how do we advertise, put a, I guess, a turnover date on that?
Well, that's the thing that we're, LeAnn's saying that for last year. When we update that schedule, then it allows us to be more realistic, but there is a challenge with some of the, with some of the equipment in terms of a CAD system. You're just going to have to pick a number, and you're going to have to hope that that's a good number. If we were to bring in Terrence for a lot of our computer systems and all, Terrence is going to give us a best estimate, but we don't know where that's at for where that that cycle is going to be, so.
We really want to cut off support to it, right? It's like the radios, Motorola sold its radios back in the 90s, said, oh, these things will be good for 25 to 30 years, so they'll be good for about 15.
Think about the, think about the SCBA's, Mayor, where we say that we can use those breathing apparatus and we can upfit them forever. We know that we can't upfit those forever because we're going to run out of part manufacturers that can maintain it. We still tell you that information, we're spending $1 million on all these units, we hope that they'll last 10 years. 10 years is a bold number. And so when we talk about that, that's why Wally's number last year, when we're talking water and wastewater and stormwater, it's so hard to predict how long it's going to happen. The beautiful thing about that, about that schedule is when you're using Land App, their land application for our wastewater, it's a little different than if we had a standardized wastewater treatment facility. And that's a, that's testament to the council and to Wally and those teams that made that happen because it gives us more flexibility. That's where that schedule is a best, not a guess, it's an educated plan, but it's still only going to be as good as it can when it comes down to the operations.
Can I speak to that just for a little, because all of a sudden, I'm very passionate about assets after this year. As we were going through the asset policy and looking at, you know, how we have been depreciating assets, we realized that our categories of assets were extremely broad, which was a big part of the problem. And what we found out is that it really just takes dedicated staff time to evaluate assets, evaluate assets in a way that we were not previously doing. So before, if we bought an asset and it went into a certain category, it went over here to the asset system, and that was the useful life. And now, because you're right, I mean, in the category of equipment, you can have a million different things. So to say, okay, we're going to depreciate equipment over eight years or whatever number we settled on, that really, you have to have a category and a depreciation year, but it may not, you know, when you talk about SCBA's, it's really more of like a conversation with chief. Okay, what is the realistic useful life on this asset? So we gave a range, like when you look in the notes, the financial statements, I think, is it 01?
It's in 01.
867 has it.
So that way, we have the flexibility to do eight years or 20 years, whatever, but it definitely involves a lot more staff time and communication between the departments, which is always good, but it's, it's a different way of looking at assets now.
Yeah, that old method, Mayor, that was said is page 67 when you flip there, but the old way, we always tried to find that special window and put it so it's close. When you look at this one that council adopted last year, and you have buildings and structures from 15 years to 70 years, that's a, that's a good range, right? That's reasonable. We're going to upfit some things. We're going to recock some walls. But then equipment, three years to 20, and then back to your question directly, Mayor, when you go for, for some of the subscription-based technology, and that was the reference back to Terrence, as the contract term. So whatever that contract is, is basically the useful life until the next contract, and then we determine it. So I think a lot of that management's a big deal for how we effectively utilize reserve funding to ensure that our assets are, you know, they're effectively used moving forward because that's a big deal, whether it's the standardized day-to-day equipment or it's these facilities. We have to have it, as you've said before, it's not just hurricanes and rainy day, but it's the day-to-day operations that we've got to maintain. So those, the schedule, for some, when we had this discussion last year, it seems like it, it's a little more vague, but it actually helps us in that, in maintaining how we utilize our, all of our stuff, for lack of a better phrase. That's how good an audit is. It puts it in here so you can find that when you start to read, so you can see that later.
And anytime we test additions, we do pull a sample. We'll go and see what is the depreciation life, and does it actually agree to your capital policy? But then when they, when you implemented this new standard, all the assets that were in your system, they went back and manually changed the useful life, so they're, you know, all your old assets now are on this new, new life schedule too.
Any questions? Anybody?
Great work in action.
Do we have a motion to accept the?
No. Second.
Discussion? Anybody? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Thank you so much.
So Mayor, what we'll do is based on that action, we'll submit those letters back to the LGC so that that is a statement that we send in. And then once we have the accepted audit, we'll share that information with council, and we'll post that as well. And then once we get the response back from our responses, we'll share that back with council. Just to close the loop, so if anyone asks you a question, we'll share that information with you so you know what we've got going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the Human Resources Third Quarter Report.
Mayor, six and seven are together, so this is the HR quarterly report, and it's the finance quarterly report. The interesting challenge when you have the audit report is you still have our quarterly report to keep you on track, because that's our commitment. It, sometimes it seems kind of silly, but you can see the drawdown. Remember, on the audit, we always want to say, those are our numbers. That's what we use to start with for the next fiscal year. That's our foundation moving forward. So when we have our retreat in a few weeks, that's ground zero now. That'll be our baseline for all of our discussions moving forward. Just point out that the comment we like to use on our fiscal quarterly reports is, those are captured in a moment, at a point in time, where the audit is a close-of-book financial statement that shows you those numbers. So when you go back to look at the, the fiscal report there, I just want to say those are tied in. Then back on the HR report, we sent both of these out at the end of the week last week so you could look at them and then have any questions. You can see some of the trends that we have for, for human resources, and they're right in line with previous actions we've taken. We did add a couple of changes, so we keep showing you the quarterly change and a highlight for the number of applications. We answer any questions that you may have on, on this report or the other report.
Question?
I feel confident, Mayor, that our trends are going in a positive direction. We just have to keep working and, and stay in the course, and sometimes we just have to pivot and be more aggressive, so we will continue to do so. No actions dated on those items, Mayor. If you see something and you'd like to send the, send a message or call, please just send it to me. Welcome the opportunity to talk about it later if we need to.
So that's it, right?
That is it on those.
How's your one city?
I do have a couple of one-city, Mayor. Both of our one-city moments are going to come as part of the Veterans Tribute in North Carolina. Very exciting to be able to share these. Hopefully, some people were able to attend this, this past weekend. We did have Red, White &amp; Salute that our recreation team hosted on Friday night at the Commons. That included the concert and the laser light show. You know, we learned last year that the laser light show is, is an interesting, different type of presentation, and it's not as risky as a fireworks show. So whether you like the lights, whether you like the fireworks, there's a lot of different opportunities. And, and I credit our team for looking at how to bring something new to the community to try and have a, a good family event that can be, that can maximize utility of the commons space. You see the stand, the stage here, the stage process is turned in really good, great space inside the commons. You can see having the equipment there in the commons as well. We had a fantastic turnout. The weather was good. Our military members were out and about, letting people, this is part of that concept of, of touch a truck, touch a vehicle. You know, the, the ability to go into an apparatus totally changes that opportunity, and it brings our Marines out into the neighborhood. These individuals are all out there for the concerts. We had food trucks all around. So when you think about our ability to integrate some of our partners for these events, we really can't do our events without all of the partners. So whether you're out there throwing an ax, or you're listening to music, or you're riding the mechanical bull, we had all that here. And I don't know how that all cleared, Mr. Carter, but maybe he didn't even know it was there, so.
I didn't know.
But the fact is, we're creating opportunities for our citizens to get out and about and have a great time. So kudos to these teams and to all the community partners that made it happen. This is a TDA-sponsored event, which is fantastic for the TDA to step up. Our people wouldn't know about events like this if we're not getting the marketing out. And if you scroll through, if you scroll through these pictures and you look at people when they come through, they all don't just live inside of the Jacksonville city limits. They're from the communities, surrounding communities. They're coming from the beaches, just like our people go to go check out the ocean and the water. So great event there. The second event, Mayor, was the Onslow Veterans Powwow. This is the, I think it's the fifth year that, or the fourth year that we've had the Powwow. And what a, what another amazing event to welcome and appreciate individuals into the community. Again, it's the Veterans Powwow, so it has just this uniqueness and this character that the other events do not have. And for, when we talk about arts and culture and bringing people together, you also see people from around the region. You're going to have people easily from, from Lumberton, you have people from the far west of the state, and then you have people all around Onslow County here with us to enjoy this event. It was held Saturday and Sunday at the American Legion Fairgrounds. I think that's another good use of a, of a local partner with the fairgrounds. That's a, that's a really good location for us. You'll see that flag retirement ceremony with the Jacksonville Boy Scouts troop, and then you also have the traditional crostoff dance. So isn't that great? Like this aerial here shows you that layout. If you haven't seen one, I encourage anybody listening to show up to the Powwow event. It really is an all-day and multi-day event that you can be engaged or you can disengage at any point and come back and still not have a fear of missing out on it. So here's, yet again, we have some of our most amazing picture opportunities that fully display the culture of our community. This is, Mayor, this is.
Great business.
Our Jacksonville.
Beautiful.
That's all I have, sir.
This time, I've been entertaining motion to go into closed session to discuss some property or land acquisition.
So moved.
Second. So listen, 65%, 50%?
Aye.
Who's the public?
Yes, sir.